It is a little after seven. We will begin the open session portion of the meeting. But before we do that, we need to have a calendar hearing. The yearly district calendar hearing is required by state law any time you open a school year more than 10 days prior to the first Monday in September. And as we all know, we start school more than 10 days prior to the first Monday in September. So this is the district calendar hearing portion of the meeting. And if there is anybody that would like to address the board on the calendar issue, the district calendar which has been posted for 2014-2015, if there's anybody that would like to address that issue with the board, please step forward to the podium at this Seeing none, we will now close the district calendar portion of the meeting and move into open session. And our pledge of allegiance, Carson and Matthew, will you guys step forward? Everybody stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Ackerman, it's time for honoring excellence.
Thank you very much. Good to see everybody tonight. Before we jump into honoring excellence this evening, I just wanted to recognize some of our young students that are with us this evening. They're back here in the back. I didn't know they were coming tonight. They're members of the Liberty North High School Student Council. They're here for some leadership credit, kind of a leadership project with Ms. Plaster and Mr. Doug Davis up at Liberty North. So we want to welcome them. They may during our break track you down for your autograph because they need some proof for their attendance here tonight.
Wait till after.
Okay, so be ready for that.
We'll do that in about two hours if that's okay.
Dr. Palmer, would you join me here at the podium? I don't recognize you. You're weird. Looking good. Looking good. Well, we're going to hear from Dr. Palmer here in just a moment. But I wanted to read, you know, we've had so many great things taking place in the district the last several weeks, and tonight we just wanted to highlight one of those. We want to take a moment to salute the staff of Lewis and Clark Elementary who last month were recognized as a national model PLC school. Lewis and Clark is now only one of two elementary schools in the state of Missouri and 75 elementary schools across the United States and Canada that have received this rare distinction. For those not familiar with the term PLC, this stands for professional learning communities, which is the school's continuous school improvement framework to always focus on student learning, thrive in a collaborative culture, and have an intense focus on results. Again, with us this evening are not only several members of the Lewis and Clark Trailblazer Team, but also the principal of Lewis and Clark, Dr. Kyle Palmer, and also the assistant principal of Lewis and Clark, Ms. Katie Lawson, who do just a great job. Dr. Palmer, he has graciously agreed to share a few words with us here this evening.
Well, you said a lot of what I was going to say, so I'll be even shorter now. But I want to, first of all, say how nice it is to have both Mr. and Mrs. Ackerman with us tonight. What a rare opportunity. I want to start off by thanking the school board and central office administration for honoring us here tonight, and also to Dallas for organizing this great honor for us tonight to recognize a lot of the work and the energy and the time our staff has put in the last several years. As Dallas said, this is a PLC award. It stands for professional learning communities, which is a kind of a school continuous improvement model that's really kind of spearheaded by Solution Tree, which is a company out in Bloomington, Indiana with CEO Jeff Jones and kind of run by Dr. Richard Defour and Becky Defour. And I know our staff always laughs at me because I say these are kind of my heroes in my life, and they talk about famous actors and actresses and singers. Those are kind of my idols, the people that I follow and have a great deal of respect for. It is a focus on student learning, a focus on collaboration, a focus on results. And as Dallas said, to only be two, one of two elementary schools in the state of Missouri, 75 in the entire country, and one of 200 schools and school districts across the United States and Canada, we definitely are in very rare company. Three years ago, as I saw our PLC kind of take off and I saw the great work happening every single day, I set my own personal BHAG. That is a big hairy audacious goal. And I did that just myself. I wanted this to be something no one really knew about, something that we just attained just because we did great things, not because it's a checklist. A PLC is not a checklist of things you just cross off that you do over time. You earn it the old-fashioned way, and that's through hard work, and that is through getting the results with our students that we've been able to get the last several years, having some of the highest math scores in the state of Missouri for a number of years, as well as very strong ELA scores. If you actually go to allthingsplc.com, you will see our school and you'll see the application that we put in. And like I said, it's been a very kind of a long process, a very rewarding process. And you know, one of the neatest things along the way is that we've gotten a lot better because of it, because of the feedback that we've received, that we've gotten a lot better over these last few years. I'm very glad our staff was able to join us tonight. A lot of our staff be here tonight, and you can pick us out pretty easily, wear the ones in the really bright orange shirts. They are the reason that I'm standing here right now. They are one of the greatest collection of people you'll ever be around. And truly being a PLC, it is the collective best of people. And one thing I learned very quickly when I got into administration, got into leadership, is it's all about the value of the people that you surround yourself with. And we've been very fortunate to surround ourselves with a very high-level, very talented group at Lewis and Clark Elementary. I am one very lucky administrator. I think I speak for Mrs. Lawson as well. We are incredibly blessed to come to work each and every day, to be with these people and to see what they do. And speaking both as a parent of one student you see there and another daughter who attends Lewis and Clark, and as a principal, congratulations to Lewis and Clark Elementary. You are now in very select company, and that is teaching and working at a nationally recognized school, which is not something a lot of people get to say. So congratulations, and thank you very much for all your hard work.
Why don't our staff that have assembled here from Lewis and Clark just stand? Dr. Palmer, Ms. Lawson as well? Let's give them another bigger round of applause. So with that, that concludes honoring excellence for tonight. I hope everyone has a great upcoming Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you, Dallas. And I see in the Lewis and Clark crowd, we have a former teacher of the year, Ms. Cornell; we have a current teacher of the year, Ms. Baker, and about a dozen candidates for this year's teacher of the year. So it's our tradition to take a break at this time and come out and congratulate you and shake a few hands. So we're going to do that right now, and we'll reconvene here at 7:25. I'm not sure where Bob is. Okay, we're going to reconvene, and we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Any further discussion? If not, Sandra, we call roll.
Bren?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I failed to remind everybody in attendance about the blue card policy, but if there's anybody here that would like to address the board at this time, please stand, and there is no one. You guys don't want to talk to the board tonight? Okay. Okay, committee of organization reports. I'm told that there are none for this evening. So we're going to keep moving right into consent.
I move we approve consent agenda items 4.01 through 7.03.
Oh, yeah, I can do that. Do we have a second on the consent? Let's do that first with the motion, and then discuss the motion.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a second. Just as an FYI, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? If not, Sandra, would you please call roll?
Bren?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to section eight, 8.01, policy updates. Mr. Youngman, do you want to speak to these?
Just a couple of brief ones that are on second read, BBBA, which is board member qualifications. I did something sent out by MSBA, just an update. And then JHG, which is our reporting and investigating child abuse and neglect procedure or policy, which was updated per state statute that needed to be updated. So those are the two for second read. And then IGCE is just a minor revision. You'll see it, but this is first read. So take a peek at it, and if you have any questions, let us know, and we'll adopt it hopefully next month. We have a few more that are kind of coming your way in the next couple of months, just so you know. December and January, we're trying to get all of the last set done because of February, MSBA has let us know that there's a new set coming based on last year's legislative session, which is difficult processes. It takes them six, nine months after that, and then we'll get a big new set in February that we'll work through all next summer.
Very good. So we will not be approving or asking for approval of IGCE.
Correct.
But we do need a motion to approve BBBA and JHG. Bren, would you like to make?
So moved.
That is to approve BBBA and JHG as presented?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on these two policies? If not, Sandra, would you call roll?
Bren?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to 9.01, the district calendar, which is the calendar for 2014-15. We have a hearing, state required hearing earlier this evening. And is there anything else you want to cover on this?
We had first read at the work session, if you remember right, and covered the three different options. We were waiting for Team Liberty's recommendation to superintendent. I've taken that and passed that and created mine, which is the exact same one. I think they did a thorough review of what was the best shift. I think Lori, Kim Marie, Bob can answer any questions that the board may have about that recommendation that came to you in the Friday update, and then this is just the calendar draft.
Anything to share? Okay, well, we need a motion. The recommended action is I move the board adopt the 2014-15 district calendar as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the calendar? Seeing none, Sandra, would you please call roll?
Bren?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That takes us to 9.02, agreement with the City of Liberty. Dr. Youngman?
And if you all recall, this was another part of our work session as we put this in front of you last month, said, "Give us feedback, we'll answer questions in the work session, make any adjustments, and then bring it to you for final read tonight." Carol, obviously, has been the point person on this with Janet from the city, as well as all leaders throughout both of our organizations to put together a good document to move us forward. So Carol, anything that you want to add, and then any questions you might have?
Just any changes that were made, were provided to you through that communication last week, and there were very few changes made. The primary change was relative to the new information that the grant for the federal allocation no longer was applicable because the lease had expired. So that's great news for both parties, and so we did remove that and then made some other minor revisions, and it's been a great process, great partnership.
Any other questions for administration, or do we have a motion to approve?
I move the board approve the cooperative agreement with the City of Liberty as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
You know, just two brief things. I'd like to get this on our calendar because of the automatic rollover, and that's it.
Right.
And then, second of all, you have said it privately, I'd like you to say it publicly and really what a great relationship and cooperation there was between the city and the school district. Just 30 seconds, maybe expand on that.
I'd be happy to. Actually, Janet and I had talked about this, and this has been ongoing for many, many months, even before we started talking with board members about this.
And this is Janet Snit, the director of Parks and Recreation?
Janet Snit, she's the director of Parks and Recreation. And even at our first joint meeting where we had our staffs, Dr. Youngman wasn't available at that particular time of the meeting, but Mayor attended, and we were able to all talk about our goal of forming this cooperative agreement and revising it as we needed to to make it work out best for both parties. And the commonality that we have is that we're serving the same people. And because the Liberty, City of Liberty Parks and Recreation recognizes all students throughout the Liberty School District community, and that actually set the framework for this cooperative. So it's been a great process.
And in general, this is the agreement that lines out the use of gymnasiums and baseball fields and park areas, et cetera?
That's correct. The old agreement that was originally formed, limited usage for Parks and Rec. to just the Liberty Middle School, and obviously, we have grown significantly over time, and so we have extended that to be for nearly all of our facilities. There are some that still are not.
But they've been, that's kind of been in effect for a long time, though.
Yes.
They've been using all our fields.
Our agreement now aligns with our practice, but it's been a great effort with both entities.
And part of what we expect is that patrons will be able to see the difference in that increased partnership as well.
Right.
And the access to facilities.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Tremendous partnership.
We've come a long way.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve? The recommended motion is?
I think we already have it. We had a motion in the second.
Oh, did we? Right, darn, I lost track of where I was.
Charlene made the motion.
Did we? Charlene did? All right. There's no further discussion then. Sandra, would you call roll?
Bren?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. That takes us to report from the administration and Dr. Youngman.
Very good. Thank you very much. I would call up Dr. Williams, our secondary executive director, and Becky Gossett, our special services executive director. Mr. Brewer is out of town tonight and unable to join us, but go ahead.
Well, I'll start with Mr. Brewer's report. He wanted to make sure you noticed the good attendance and the positive note attitude that took place during our parent-teacher conferences, and there was, from all reports from principals, that everything went very well. Also, with the passage of the levy, he wanted to point out that they have started the discussions of what kind of technology would be ideal and be useful at elementary as well as at the middle level. So those discussions have been taking place and thinking about the future as they discuss those things. In the special programs report, I wanted to point out that today, we were able to spend some time as a group of administrators and counselors and nurses, talking with one of our attorneys about section 504 law and how 504 plans can be administered and implemented for students who have disabilities. And then also, we are working, and in the special education department, to make sure that we are ready for a blended learning environment, as well as for our kids with disabilities, as well as other students in the district. And some teachers are leading that effort, and especially a few of the teachers at Donovan, who have access to the one-to-one pilot in the fifth grade. We're looking at how that works for our kids with disabilities. So those are the major points. You've got a report, and you can see some other things as well, from Mr. Brewer and from me. For my part tonight, I wanted to bring you a follow-up to the ACT Academy in the form of an email that Dr. Adams sent to me, I think, last Thursday. And you know that the ACT Academy was a new initiative that was approved by you, I believe, in August or September. And I received the email from Dr. Adams that one of the coaches had sent her about one of his student athletes. And as a result of attending the academy, he raised his composite score from 1924, which really opens an entirely new set of opportunities and possibilities for them. He had been recruited by West Point, but because of his earlier score, wasn't able to be entertained as a prospective candidate. But now, they have been contacting him and are able to follow up, and that is a possibility should he choose it. So those stories are starting to roll in, and we are compiling all of that data. But I just wanted to share with you the result of some of the work that has happened, and I'm very excited to see what the overall result are, but that is definitely a highlight and we'll tour through those stories from Dr. Adams. And for Liberty North, I would love to say good luck next Saturday as they travel to Hawaii, so they're going deep into the football playoffs, and we want a big, evil victory. So that is your charge, okay? Cheer loud and to play hard. Thank you.
Becky, any updates on the BEST group and the work that was done last month and then what's coming up?
Yes, yes. We had a good attendance at the session that was held by the BEST committee. Ed Moses was the presenter and gave lots and lots of information about what kinds of effects there are on the brain when young people use drugs and alcohol, gave some really good information, and it was well-attended. I think we had about 180 people, patrons there for the most part. So it was a good evening. Our next event is the survey that we just sent out, and we'll continue to look for feedback from parents. At this point, we're asking that feedback from parents from that survey, asking them questions about what they see, the social pressures on teenagers, what they think are the major social pressures. So we'll look at those results. We have a meeting later this week, and of course, we won't have the results back from that survey at this point. But we'll close that in a couple of weeks, and then we'll be able to have more information that kind of will help us in the form of.
Other questions for Dr. Williams or Becky? Thank you very much. Part of the next work session, just so you know, we're working on the key performance indicators list. You know, we saw the scorecard template last month, and those will be coming out to you very soon. But the key performance indicator work that the teams are doing will be part of your next work session, so you can kind of get an update of what's the dashboard data look like that we're trying to use to make sure that kids are moving forward every day that they're in our system. So we'll give you an update soon. Thank you, Academic Services. Dr. Vogel, our HR reporter.
Very good. Thank you. Uploaded in the board docs, you'll see the report from human resources, the activities that we're engaged in that are aligning to the strategic plan. We've also posted at Bren's request a few months back, the current enrollment numbers. These are as of today's date, a number pulled from Power School. And as I was looking at it, I reflected on how when I started in this position, we had our very first class crossover into 900. That was a first-grade class, they're now seventh graders. And every class in the elementary is upwards of 900, and we have one that's even over 1,000. I mean, it's just amazing how much.
And that class keeps creeping up.
And it keeps.
It drops down a couple.
Then it goes back up.
Yeah.
Down two, up four. Down two, up four.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's certainly endemic of change that we experience and indicative, I think, of the quality of schools in the community that draws families into it. So, you know, growth has its challenges, but it certainly is a positive sign as well. In terms of highlights from the HR report, you know, one of our big areas of emphasis is looking forward to the recruiting season that will kick off at the end of January. I know it seems like that's so early to be thinking about the following year, and so we're making changes in how we get at the best and brightest, particularly with regard to 21st century learning mindsets and new technology innovations and finding those candidates who kind of come in with that, you know, that training, that knowledge, and that slant toward teaching and learning. And so we're working on the systems that need to be in place to kind of allow those applications to go to the top and get out to principals in the earliest fashion. And then we're going to be training principals in January on those changes, on those modifications, and that'll ready us for a great hiring season.
Any questions for Dr. Vogel, HR? Thank you, and Ms. Embry, we'll turn it to you.
Yes, thank you.
She's been incredibly busy in the last few weeks, or last few days, actually, also weeks, but especially busy the last few days.
A lot of meetings, yes. A lot of planning meetings. I'll highlight for you that we did meet, the Audit and Finance Committee met in this very room last Monday. And as a reminder, that group meets physically once a quarter, but otherwise meets monthly electronically in terms of reviewing all of the documentation. So you continue to have a group of experienced and educated people looking at that information. But this month was a little different because they spent about an hour with Diana Klosterman, a partner with Westbrook and Company, reviewing the audit. And that information will be coming for your approval at the December board meeting, one of those meetings. But do understand that the audit, we had a great report. I think for the first time, and I told Cindy Sullivan, who ran the charge for getting that audit processed and closing up here, I've been through 22 school district audits, and never in my history have we experienced getting the final report to the state done one time, within one time. So that was pretty impressive, one and done. It was great. Doesn't happen very often, but the audit has also proved to be quite successful as well. So that information will come to you in the coming weeks. As Dr. Youngman alluded to, a lot of the time has been spent on facility master planning, and we've provided for you just the very brief snapshot of the planned construction from start time to punch list time. And so that will be modified, and you'll continue to be apprised of those dates coming up. This week, excuse me, we will be meeting for a project design discussion with Dr. Adams and Dr. Jacobs. Excuse me. Also, I've indicated for you some of the temporary changes that we'll need to consider in terms of relocating services during that period of time. So next week, we have bid openings. We have a pre-bid meeting actually coming up Wednesday, and then next week we'll have some bid openings for some of the projects. So it's moving very quickly, but we're in quite capable hands between Collison Miller Architectural Firm and also Universal Construction. The other item I am sharing with you is actually just passing through communication, and this is from Hunt Midwest with regard to the work that's being done on 104th Street. And they had provided us with some pictures and just an indicator that they're moving right along on that. So that's been provided for you. That's funded by the Shoal Creek TIP. And as we move through our process, we will develop some pictures and post those for you on board docs to show you the progress that we make. Any questions for me?
One quick question on the audit.
Yes.
As we do every year, I mean, that audit gets in front of the Audit and Finance Committee before it comes to us, so they have a chance to look at it, make comments.
Right.
Suggestions.
And they actually, they spent a full hour reviewing that with Diana Klosterman.
Just with the auditor on site in the room, right?
Yes, yes. And the physical document hasn't been provided at this point in time, the final document, and that will be coming in the days. If we'd received it, we could have provided it to you for this evening, but we had not yet received that.
Right.
So as soon as that is made available to us, we will get that to you so that you have an opportunity to review it. But there were no findings, and everything went very well. They run a very efficient audit. That was part of the conversation. I'll have to share this, though. One of the Audit and Finance Committee members said, "They seem to be really picky." And I said, "You know, it is an interesting relationship that we have."
I mean, that audit gets in front of the Audit and Finance Committee before it comes to us, so they have a chance to look at it, make comments.
Right.
Suggestions.
And they, actually, they spent a full hour reviewing that with Diana Klosterman.
Just with the auditor on site, in the room, right?
Yes. Yes. And the physical document hasn't been provided at this point in time, the final document, and that will be coming in the days. If we'd received it, we could have provided it to you for this evening, but we had not yet received that. So, as soon as that is made available to us, we will get that to you so that you have an opportunity to review it. But there were no findings, and everything went very well.
Okay.
They run a very efficient audit. That was part of the conversation. I'll have to share this, though. One of the Audit and Finance Committee members said, "They seem to be really picky." And I said, "You know, it is an interesting relationship that we have. We appreciate having a very good audit, but it can be exhausting through that process, too." So, they do a very good job.
Good.
I'd rather they be picky.
Yes. And that's what I said. Actually, I actually said, "It's kind of a love-hate relationship we have."
We pay them, we be picky.
Yeah, we picky. We do. Well, my words to them were, as an employee in the system, would it be easier to have an auditor who didn't do such a great job? Yes, it would be. But as a taxpayer in this community, do I want Westbrook and Company conducting that audit? You better believe it. And so, I say that to each of you as well.
Very good.
Other questions for Carol about the projected timeline, any of the projects? Obviously, you see we're full speed ahead at this point, and we'll have hopefully some bids for you to review in the upcoming meetings so that we can hit the mark on this aggressive timeline. We've got a lot to do, a short amount of time.
Hang on for the ride.
But I think we can make it happen. We've got a lot of great teamwork going on. Other questions? Great. As for my report, you saw that it was relatively brief. The pieces, I would tell you, obviously, continue to work with the, I mentioned the KPI indicators with the academic leaders that'll come out next month. Obviously, the facility master plan process that is under, that's being implemented, and then our leadership team series, a lot of our leadership team continuing to grow in some of the important areas we think that they need development, critical conversations, technology leadership, and then tools for the classroom. Those things are happening in the classroom on a daily basis also. Elementary Innovations Task Force would be the last thing I would update you on. That's been a process that's been underway for six months plus. As we began to talk about using this building for a different site, we knew that we would have to think differently about space, and about time, and about what the classroom looks like, resources-wise. So, we had a team of elementary parents, elementary teachers, elementary administrators begin to visualize, what's that? If I was going to reimagine it, thinking differently about a building that doesn't necessarily have all the things that I would build if I was going to build a brand-new building, how would I reinvent elementary education? So, we've had a lot of great conversations for six months around that. And what you see in the board packet tonight is a document that talks about the framework, what we want for every kid that comes to this site, how it's maybe just a tad bit different. It really focuses on empowering creativity, equipping our kids, all of our campuses. We want to equip our kids, but we want to engage in a little different level of application and creativity on this site potentially. And then, we want to really foster additional partnerships with our community on this site. So, the things that you'll see in the, kind of, the initial framework, and once again, this is just draft, Epic Elementary is kind of the tagline that we're considering using. Epic stands for Every Person Inspired to Create. We want every kid leaving here thinking about creativity and thinking about how we can impact the world in a different way than we have potentially in the past. And then, you'll see kind of empower creativity, equip students, and engage communities. Then you'll see the outcomes that we're shooting for and some of the Epic Learning Lab goals. Once again, we see this as a campus that's going to house about 300 kids. This would be a voluntary enrollment site. Not everybody has to participate, but everybody would get the chance to. It would be a lottery-based structure. And what we hope to have for you at the December work session are some beginning documents that say, "Okay, this is what this is going to look like." This is a timeline for naming of teachers and staff, as well as opening enrollment cycles, communicating to parents their opportunity to enroll if they want to, as well as what are the resources going to look like? What's the calendar potentially going to look like? It may be a little different. What would the daily schedule look like? It may be a little different. So, those are things that are all being planned by that team. We've narrowed it down to a smaller group that's helping out with that process. We'll put them in front of you in December to get your feedback, and then we will continue to workshop so that by the time we come back in January, we're ready to move. Because enrollment cycle and hiring cycle for this building is going to have to begin in February in order to meet the timeline of getting it open in August 2014. That, as well as remodeling this building. I mean, it's not going to be completely gutted by any means. We have a lot of the things in here that we think we can make use of right as they stand. There'll be some new flooring, some new wall coverings, but we'll kind of try to use the existing structure the best way possible, which means that it won't look like a conventional elementary school when you walk into it. So, that's exciting. We've got our architects working with that team on it also. They've walked through the site, they've had conversations about how we can use it in a different way. So, we'll be bringing you updates in our work session in December to really start to dig into the details and ask, and answer questions that you may have as we proceed. So, this gives you a framework idea, and anything that you have feedback for us as we fine-tune this framework, please let us know so that we can make sure there's anything that you don't see addressed or have concerns about. We need to make sure that it's out on the table because we're going to move at a relatively rapid pace on this also. We've been working for six months around the conversation, so it's not like this was thrown together in the last few days since the levy passed. This has been a conversation that started last school year. And I know Kim Marie's certain on that team, many other leaders in the room have been in those meetings. I think Lori may have been to one at one point. So, if you have questions, let us know, and we'll give you details at the work session in December.
Could you address the, then, the, like, before and after-school options?
Yep, exactly. Yeah, we expected to have the same opportunities, kids' own opportunity for before, before school and after school. So, yeah, all of those will kind of come through in the, how's it look, how's it function, how's it operate, how's it different for kids, how's it different for parents potentially, so that we can see it from all those lenses.
Right.
We can do it. Any other things before we roll off of this?
Sorry?
Yep, look forward to it. We'll keep you in the loop. That's it for administrative reports. If you have any questions.
Very good. We're moving right along.
Relatively rapid pace.
I think this is a little record. Upcoming meetings are listed before you under 12.01. Our next meeting is the first Monday of December, which is the second? Is that correct, Sandra? Is the second the first Monday?
It is.
So, we will have the Board Candidate Workshop prior to the work session, and then the work session at?
If that works.
I don't remember if that's a morning work session or not. We don't have our, I'm sorry, I have to turn over to the next page and see the other. Listen on to your piece of paper here. And then, 6:00 PM, we'll start the work session.
Correct. We also have in the morning, for those of you who have signed up and confirm this, Andrew, before you leave here, to make sure that I know who to expect, we have the Northland Caps, Incaps site visits. So, we begin at Hall in 1916 at 7:45, which I believe is at the Hartland Meadows location. And we've got the address, if you don't know for sure. Sandra has that, but we'll start there at 7:45, be there for, I think, around 30 minutes, then we'll travel to Cerner to see the other course for about 30 minutes there. We hope to be done by around 9:30. So, confirm, so I know who to expect in the morning before you get out of here. We look forward to having you there.
Very good. Anything on upcoming meetings?
Candidate filing information?
Oh, candidate filing information, sure. We will cover this again in our December meeting, but just as an FYI, the Board Candidate Workshop will be out December 2nd at 5:00 PM in this room. For difficulty, it's always been in this room, I think. And then, candidate filing opens, this year, candidate filing opens just happens to be on the morning of Christmas Eve. So, anybody who is running for school board and wants to be first in line will be in front of the door.
And that is a state-mandated date.
That's a state-mandated.
And we don't have an option.
We did not choose that date. That's right.
And then, candidate filing will close about the third week of January, on January 21st. So, anything else on upcoming meetings? If not, are there any board committee reports?
The Cansey TIP Commission met last week. I'm going to spend a little bit longer than I normally do on this, but no longer than two minutes, I promise. It's, there's what they call an administrative portion of the board, which consists of six members appointed by the mayor and then five members appointed by the taxing jurisdiction. I don't really know how those fives are set up, but for instance, we're grouped in with, I think, Park Hill and North Canton City, and Paul Harrell is our representative. I think we approve a resolution every year or every other year that does that. But there's a little, there's an interesting dynamic developing, as I see it, that I think this board would be very happy about. You remember the process we went through a couple of years ago, where we tried to chart out advantages and disadvantages of TIPS? They're not going to that extent, but what they're doing is the five representatives from the taxing entity, I think, are very mindful of how their taxing entities, such as school districts, are affected by TIP. And so, these questions are coming out, and there's just a little more aggressiveness, I think, being involved. So, it's really kind of a neat, I don't know where it's going to go and how it's going to end, but it's happening. And there's great, great discussions going on. But long and short of it, as it relates to us, the only information that was presented is the 104th Street, which Carol briefly talked about. I think they approved additional $30,000 for some additional studies. So, less than two minutes, right?
Yeah, and I think you should, I'm kind of looking at David because he did a lot of work on that, share with him kind of the stuff that we put together back when.
Yeah, it's neat that the discussion's happening. It's pretty aggressive discussions. I think you'll see some, something come out of it.
It's all focused on efficiencies, being more efficient, too.
Yes.
Very good. Not completely unrelated to that, Andy and I have been sitting on the Liberty Residential Task Force. Do you want to update about the only thing that's going on right now? We've kind of tagged in the, those meetings, but they are wrapping up and coming out with the final report to the City Council sometime, I think, in the next few weeks.
Yeah, the meetings are wrapped up, and it's just providing the feedback, and that's going to be presented to the City Council?
Yeah. And again, there's an awareness of who's impacted by what. Any other committee reports?
Next Vision 2020 meeting is December 5th, so if you're on that team, we look forward to having you there at the Pro Childhood Center. It's the last additional meeting that we've got on the upcoming.
I can't believe it's Thanksgiving. Carol said we were going to get the audit report in November or December, and I thought, "Oh, that's a couple of months away."
It's almost gone.
Okay, board remarks. Any final remarks?
I do have just one quick remark. My family had an opportunity to see Tarzan at Liberty Hospital last Friday. I know Lori was there. Our final productions are always fantastic, but this one is particularly good. So, if you have a chance to go see it, definitely go see it.
I hope there's still tickets available.
I know.
Friday night was sold out. I'd say Friday was sold out, and I think Thursday.
There's a Saturday matinee. Don't know if it's sold out, but there is a matinee on Saturday.
Encourage you to get there.
It is.
It is sold out for next weekend.
There you go.
Yeah.
It is, yes. Fantastic.
Yes, it will be soon.
Very good. Any other remarks? I only have one kind of generic remark, and that is, on behalf of this entire board,